Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Sohagan School Board Meeting. It's April third at six P M. Before we even get started with the public hearing, I would, first of all, John Glover is not able to join us tonight, but he is on via Zoom. So, John, I'd just like to ask you the question. It was difficult for you to be here and if you are alone.
Um, yes, and yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
The other piece before we get started, based on the incident that happened at the Empress will be board meeting last week, I would like to ask our school members for approval to suspend taking public comments via Zoom. Uh, people in person can can make comments. Uh, we can take some comments via chat in the Zoom, or you can send us an email which would be presented in the next agenda uh, as board communication. So could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion tonight, thanks.
Thank you, I have a second.
Second.
All right, um, any comment? Any discussion? All right, because John is remote.
Could I just ask a question? About that? Which is, is that like permanent suspension, or is that until we can sort of figure out a way to enable that in a um, in a manner that is protective, but also um enables uh, public to still participate by Zoom? Like, is that going somewhere, or is this just sort of a forever suspension?
We need to have that discussion, John, and I think that's something we're going to have over the next few weeks.
I can answer. I have intentions, and I think we're going to bring it up at the four-chair meeting in April fifteenth, describe what we want to do uh, for uh three districts and then have some individual individual conversations at the board meetings between now and then, because we have tenth and the seventeenth with the other boards. And so we'll there, but John, I'm I'm looking into it. I'm not sure how to protect ourselves, but we'll talk more over the next couple of weeks about that.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, so uh
I have a question too.
Yes.
How did that come to be that we originally started taking public comment through Zoom? And I actually always found it very strange that we take public comment online. I I'd be fine if we didn't do it all, however, I would have liked it to be something that was sent out to the public along with the announcement of the meeting, you know, before we suspend it. So I almost be inclined to allow um, audio comment tonight.
We'll take
This is part of discussion. This is part of discussion for tonight, and I think I can say this before we vote. I would like to see us take audio comment and then put it then vote to suspend it in the next meeting. And if it's not RSA protective thing, my thought is that if you if you're here, you can comment, and if you're not, you cannot. You can send an email like any announcement. But that's just my, we we don't have to do it that way. I just think if there was a member of the public who had planned to say something online, we didn't give them any notice that we might be removing that option.
That's why I said we could do, they could enter via chat.
I don't know how we could make that an option.
Yeah, we're like
To suddenly to accept written comment. That 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 seems like a while, a departure from how we've been doing it. Like, that's just my two cents.
Other discussions?
Well, I mean, so I'm just looking at, uh, Steve had the 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 folks up who are logged in remotely. I see two of them have identified themselves. The third has not. Um, so if you are iPad guest.
Well, well, even the person had identified themselves last week, and unfortunately.
Yeah.
We had.
Really?
Yeah.
I I may anybody. Christine, I I agree with you, right? So you want to make sure that the process that you're following today is equal to previous meetings and sessions in years, um, because it's only fair to the community if they did come with the expectation. However, um, the process did start in COVID, right? And so it was designed as a safety mechanism. It was allowed by the state of New Hampshire, um, and specifically by executive order of the governor to now allow these meetings to occur virtually and not have everyone present in a physical space. But the law has actually changed. It was spearheaded the RSA with one of the selectmen, Gary Daniels, who is our senator, rightly, they are not not modern, but emerst senator, uh, who adopted state RSA rules surrounding public comment period, which we then adopted as policy uh, to permit both verbal, as long as they turned on their camera, as long as they identified themselves as a member of the community, and um, they were allowed to actually speak. Um, however, um, we as a board reserve the right to um, amend or challenge or change or uh, withhold some of our policies by a simple board vote. And in light of the instance has been described to me from the emerst session, I think tonight it would be a very wise idea that we just do this because we know this could be replicated or duplicated. But I like the idea of affording the community, they still want to participate virtually, because there was no warning that this would take place, that they use the chat feature. And we keep public comment period open and direct our assistant superintendent to inform the board and provide the context of maybe those comments, so we can then digest it and take it into consideration. That's just my
But I'd like to request if that's how we're going to receive tonight, Mr. Chamberlain, that we put that as a comment at the top of our chat tonight, so that people joining late can refer back and see that, and that anything that's collected throughout the meeting could be offered in the second public comment, like.
Yes, absolutely.
And and so the motion specifically, did it say just tonight?
There, it didn't say. It said until we have further review. Well, I said, okay.
Um, well, maybe we should put a bit of a uh, fuse a a a break around there so that we don't put that in perpetuity and never solve the problem. So I'd like to maybe propose that we amend the motion to or for tonight. Uh, and you know, if next board meeting, we have to do it again, we can do that, but I think we should, you know, I maybe just to 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 Christine's point, that's
Yeah.
A suggestion.
Anything other?
Well, unless a motion was made and then seconded, so I believe we have to vote.
We'd have to vote.
And then we have to come back to get.
Well, you can, you can amend. You can actually amend, and then you can vote on amended.
Yeah.
And then you can vote on the amended motion.
So if if I can, Raj, just address that, that we're concerned. The matter has been referred to the local police department and is currently in an investigative sort of phase. Now, whether or not that investigation takes thirty days, twenty days, ten days, two days, we should probably allow that to play out, and then the S A U board, um, specifically the four chairs and then the entire body of seventeen, uh, take the feedback that's provided by that investigation, that maybe the administrative actually administration receives, and then incorporate that into a policy. And at that time, we revisit the concept of actually virtual uh, participation uh, by the public. That's just my my feedback.
So did you actually offer amendment or just suggest that we do it?
He suggested he has
Just because I don't know what the, I apologize, I don't know what the parliamentary procedure is there specifically once it's been seconded.
Yeah, we can, we can make it, you can make an amendment. We can vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the amended motion. So is there amendment?
You know, I was trying to, I guess, what's your thought there, Christine? Because I was trying to be sensitive to what, like respectful to what you were saying. I don't want this to be in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Because I don't want us to make a motion that becomes uh, a policy inadvertently. That's my concern.
So we could
If I may, after we vote on this particular thing for tonight, because we probably spending way too much
Yes.
One issue, we can add this to an agenda item to say, when the investigation is done, and the S A U has received proper feedback and recommendations about how we can perfect uh, this process to then revisit it at this board meeting. I think that's probably the best way to 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 do it. Thank you.
So do we need an amendment at this point? I don't think we're good.
If he doesn't, he's already done.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we're going to stick with the original motion? And your roll call vote? All right, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Yes.
Peter's yes.
Man.
Manning, yes.
Run, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your your commentary on that. And can you add something to chat? Just one, thank you. All right, so then can I have a motion to bring the public hearing to order?
So moved.
They have a second, I guess. And again, we have to do a roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Yeah, Glover, yes.
Yes. Manning, yes.
Run, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
All right, thank you very much. So the public hearing in our agenda items, we have um, two um, grants. Sorry, not grants. Two um, different motions that we're going to need to vote on tonight. Uh, Amy, did you want to speak to him, or do you want me to try and stumble through it? Where can do it? Um, so the first one is on special revenue funds. So and then we received grants that exceed the amount that's in our budget, the amount of the budget is at two forty-nine, five hundred. The additional money of four forty-nine, four forty-nine, four hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars is over the budget that was approved in twenty twenty-five. So we need to um, approve acceptance of those monies and the authorization to spend them on the special revenue funds.
And and um, a lot of the, a lot of the, some of it is, you can see in the attached uh, spreadsheet, some of it, some of it is just small amounts over the FY twenty-five uh, projected um, allocation. Some of it is prior year uh, grants that were approved last year, but now need to be approved this year to be able to expend them as part of this year's budget. So the attached grant gives you all, like all of the detail um, between what was approved in the budget and then what um, the actual amount that is received or is eligible to be expended. So we just need uh, approval to spend over that amount. Um, and that's because we operate on a gross budgeting basis, so we can't spend more than what was appropriated. Um, so this gives us the opportunity to uh, to use those funds, right? Any questions?
Two questions about the grants.
Yes.
We fall short of spending that line out for grant, what happens? Second question is if we don't approve this year, what happens to the insurance?
So if we don't approve this, then we would have to find those funds in the budget because we can't spend more than what was appropriated. So this allows us to increase the appropriation in order to be able to spend those funds. And I did hear the first question, I'm sorry.
Right here. The money would roll over to next year if we don't.
Yeah, we have seen it down the
Yep.
Grant, and we spent forty-eight, there's two grand go into.
So like you'll see that the first grant I D E A, there's funds, um, take the the second row is FY twenty-four. So the clue for that is the project number, the first one is twenty-five, and then the second one is twenty-four. So those are funds that uh, were allocated in twenty-four that are being utilized in uh, twenty-five.
So there's not a timeline to miss.
There is a timeline.
There's a date, usually three years per and then if you don't finish it by the end, it goes back in state, and they do a pull it all together and offer a statewide you know, opportunity to apply for the unused statewide funds.
You very rarely get back.
Lately, there's been some buying back on unused federal funds, which is just a little bit different than the old ones.
Right. That's sort of the one that's like, yeah. At risk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Does the acceptance of this change the default budget or no, it's separate?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. All right, so can I have a motion um, to accept and expend the additional
There's a second part to this too.
Yes, but we're going to do one at a time.
Perfect, yeah.
Oh, okay. Because they're kind of separated everywhere. Yeah, yeah. So we do have a few people in the audience, so I don't know if they have any comments to make on our grants. And nothing in the chat?
Nothing in the chat. There's a little typo of my stuff. It's like, is I hit return too early?
Too, too fast.
Not used to doing.
All right, so now can I have a motion? To accept and expend a
We got one.
Got one.
We got.
Got it.
Well, she's supposed to put it in the chat.
Yeah.
The hands up. But we're accepting it. If you could type it into the chat.
Yes. We're only accepting comments via chat this evening. So if there's a comment to be made, if you could type it into chat, please.
See, I think.
That's right. Yes, right. All right, so is anything getting typed?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. We're going to go on to the other one again. If you have any public comment, we need to put it into chat tonight. Uh, we're not taking public comment via Zoom due to uh, an incident that happened last week. So I'm not sure who has their hand raised.
No.
They can type it out. Okay. All right, so she put something in the chat, does that we know? She will come back and visit that. Um, the other item in our uh, public hearing is to approve uh room using monies from the school district, school maintenance expendable trust fund um, up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and it's related to the phase two, the skylight project. And items around that, along with furniture, glass removable walls, exterior wall, metal panels, you'll see all the detail in there. And these are part of the items that are already in the maintenance plan, so it's just actually using the money as we have to do. Is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, just the um the caveat that we um, the the uh, voters approved the Warren article for three hundred thousand dollars to come from the assigned fund balance. However, that we we won't know for sure that that can be funded until the end of this fiscal year. Um, however, we want to make sure that we're able to complete the skylight project, so Roger wants to have approval for that so that he can move forward with ordering um, the equipment and supplies and whatever else we need to um, to to complete that first portion of the skylight project. Uh, and then um depending on as we get closer to the end of the year and determine that that three hundred thousand will be available, we'll feel comfortable using funds to uh, to fund all of these projects in the project plan. But should we fall short potentially, then we may need to um, to dial some of that back. Um, because the, we always want to maintain at least a hundred thousand dollars per building in the fund in in the event of an emergency, so that's two hundred thousand um, for both of the buildings. We're pretty close. Um uh, if we don't have the three hundred, but just to be be sure. So we would prioritize life safety um, expenses, so that would be the uh, the fire system replacement, the generator. Uh, those would really be the priorities, and then the other three projects, we would take a look at those in terms of uh, priority, the furniture replacement, the movable walls and the exterior panel. But we we were likely going to be able to 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 do the full amount. Uh, Roger, also that that one eighty for the skylight is uh, an estimate. He feels pretty good about it, but uh, we wanted to move forward with this so that we could get get moving on the project. Again, in in order to be able to complete the one this summer, so yeah. Questions?
What question?
I I
Do you go ahead?
Good, no, go ahead.
Yeah.
So that, so obviously we can't spend money we don't have, so he won't spend uh, ahead um. But he has to order some things, you said, so like how?
We have the money.
Oh, we do have it.
Yep, we just, we just may not have enough to do all of this work and maintain two hundred thousand dollars of the balance.
Okay. All right.
So yeah, so currently we have about uh, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand
Understood, okay.
In the account.
Okay, we're anticipating three hundred thousand dollars being added
Yep.
Potentially.
Yes.
At the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
Um, but but then the spending was six hundred something thousand. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Mr. Roger?
Sort of make up the balance, will we be looking for transfer of funds or going to Warren?
Yeah, we can't, we can't transfer funds into this, so it would be, we just don't spend it. So that's why she said she's going to prioritize the life safety issues and the, so the skylights would come first. I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but then the fire system and generator, those those are obviously life-saving issues that need to be spent first, so they won't spend any of the other money unless we have it in the account.
To to get a little bit more clarification on a couple of line items here.
Yeah.
Does Mr. O'Keefe, a couple of months ago, brought a potential issue with the skylights. Is that included in this number, or is he going to go back? Mr. O'Keefe, if you're fill in.
Just quite the same.
Yeah, it was the recommendation of installing physical heating elements on it to prevent snow buildups and stuff.
That is a part of, that is included.
Yep.
And then fire system, we talked in fire suppression system, a tripler, we talking fire alarm.
Panels and devices.
A lot, okay.
Yeah.
Um. And then, can we cover a little bit more about the generator and what's?
So that's in the main building, it just end of life needs to be replaced.
I think it's the original generators, yeah, thirty, sort of.
Okay. The M's would maintain on that and just is where you like. I missed that in Roger important. Oh. And then movable walls. Is that a replacement? Is that a a capital fixture, or is that a new?
Replacement.
Replacement.
A lot of those removable walls, I think, again, are the original.
We're in the process now.
They're thirty-seven years old, and some of them are fallen, not been on track exactly right, so we're making sure we replace them along the way, make sure they're safe and in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. So questions uh, about some of the the facts, this is the first time I've seen some of these pop up on this, the generator. Um Have we looked to the state um, or uh, some sort of federal grants that we could have applied or can apply to a public safety side of things for a shelter and emergency management? I know our generator of Auburn, we got a stupid no bus um, through the National Guard, and I hate to say it was free, because it wasn't free, it was like forty thousand dollars. And it was the cost of not only the install, but the building uh, and the electrician stuff. So the the actual physical generator itself was at no cost, and the forty thousand was spent to install it and
Yeah.
So the Department of Homeland Security could be a great resource or revenue and and in 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 sort of taking care of that. Um But the next sort of question I had was with the furniture replacement, I know you're over here, we tried to allocate for this, and we tried to address that particular issue um, with unassigned fund balance. Is there a reason why we're doing it through this mechanism versus the unassigned fund balance, something?
Because we pulled it out of the budget.
Okay.
So what it was, yeah, it actually had been in
Yeah.
This capital maintenance for a number of years.
Yeah.
But we never were spending it, and because we pulled other money lower the budget, we now need to pull with capital agencies, and it really traditionally been budgeted. But that actually is.
But in terms of our unassigned fund balance at the end of this year, what is, do we have a night to the end of the destination, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So um as of right now, and I and I don't have projections for tonight, um, next board meeting I will. Uh, it I'm relatively confident we'll be able to cover the Warren articles and um, hoping to cover the the tax impact, but beyond that, I don't have a chance to that.
Remember, it was connected to the skylight work that we've pulled in to make sure we had enough money to skylight. Now the skylight, I mean, that we think we could do both.
Right.
And that's why we're looking to work to show up now. Okay.
And then it was also put on the budget, and we said, we believe we're going to have some savings on the skylight project, so we put it back. So data's moving movable furniture.
And the exterior walls? Metal panel replacements, what is that?
So the on the exterior.
His exterior walls, it has metal panel repairs, I think.
Yes.
I'll have to
So, well, would would it be wise to separate these things to vote on this? The grants as one, and then?
We were, yeah, when we go into our regular meeting, we're gonna, I don't know if we're gonna do the, I think we want to say we're gonna give them the the opportunity to spend up to the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That means they don't have to spend it all, but they can spend up to the six twenty that covers all these issues. I don't know, I don't know about details, other than I think there was some damage that was done.
There was damage to the metal. I don't know, like, angels of damage, or no, uh, wind and weather and where? Okay, so uh, to the extent I never asked them to extend it.
That's right, I didn't know what would be external.
The annex.
The annex has like metal flashing.
Oh, yeah.
And
All under the windows?
I actually walked around it the other day, I was like it's so I'm kind of left with money there. But
Yeah, it's just a replacement. It is, isn't it? Yeah. Right, any comments from public chat? That's what I want to check in a second here. I first want to give anyone in the room a chance to, any questions on our this one? Is there any, are there any questions in the public chat? On either of them?
Yes. So um, the first one is, I apologize for not opening the chat, it's a different setting, we never opened the chat.
Oh.
No worries, I'd like to encourage support to accept spoken comments without video for future meetings. Some of us citizens have other concerns at the evening, would like to remain engaged in board meetings. I'm fine without being on camera. I hope the board will consider that instead of abandoning virtual participation entirely when the board members can't make it sometimes. Thank you. And even board members can't attend, it's personal sometimes, the town always allows this, I think, space would would be low virtually, but it would be a shame to abandon that entirely. Over one bad apple requests require us to put us our address or whatever to verify where we speak, just a thought to board members to consider.
Appreciate that, and I think that's, we just need to review what are, what we want to do and make sure that all the wards are doing it the same way. I don't think any of us want to abandon it, to be honest with you. I think it's, we just need to make sure that um, anyone sitting in the room or watching the Zoom is not exposed to what happened last week, but I I I would say none of us really want to abandon it. Um, and there is always an option to send us an email, or we're going to use the chat for tonight. Um, so yeah, I do apologize for the last minute, but it's something that since we don't have an answer of what happened exactly last week, we need to, we want to make sure the investigation happens first, and then we'll decide how to run as an S A U. Okay, um, so can I have a motion to then close the public hearing?
We should close the public hearing.
Second?
Certainly.
And roll call vote?
Glover, yeah, Glover, yes.
Peter's yes.
Roger, yes.
We having guests?
Run, yes.
Okay, um, should we just
I think we'll follow the public meeting, the word, and then vote.
Well, okay. All right, I was, I was just clarifying whether we want to do public input first, or we wanted to vote on these two items first. So I think I will just, I'll call the the uh, general meeting to order. And based on our public hearing discussion, I am, I'd like to have, I would do two separate motions. Um, one under RSA one ninety-eight colon twenty dash B to accept and expend up to an additional four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars of unanticipated revenue into the special revenue fund. Motion. Motion from anybody?
Yes.
Motion from, from Mr. Gupta, who have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, and we'll, I'm assuming there's no other discussion, so we're into a roll call vote, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Peter's yes.
Manning, yes.
Run, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
Thank you very much. And then I need a motion to approve the expenditure of up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Sohagan Cooperative School District School Maintenance Fund, effective upon approval of this motion for C N A and C I P projects to be completely inexpensed in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for three years. I have a motion for that.
Motion to approve the expenditure of up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in funds for the Sohagan Cooperative School District, made it expendable trust fund for facilities branch.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll have to do a roll call vote on that, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Peter, yes.
Manning, yes.
Run, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
All right, thank you very much for everyone. Um, so we're going to go into public input for the general meeting, one of two. And again, if you are online, um, due to the unfortunate event that happened last week, we are going to suspend taking public comment online. You can enter your your comment on chat, and please feel free to put an email in. We're going to review our process going forward. public comment online. You can enter your your comment on chat and please feel free to put an email in. We're going to review our process going forward and make sure all the boards are working the same way and we'll come to that conclusion as quickly as possible, hopefully by hopefully within a few weeks, we'll know what we're doing. Um, so anybody in the room have public comment? Please go forward and say your name and your town of residence.
Is it okay if I ask these?
Absolutely.
If you can take one of us.
All right, my name is Victoria Freese. Um, I live here in Amherst and tonight I'm here to introduce the Foundation for Amherst Education, which is a new five oh one C three uh nonprofit here in town. We're also registered with the New Hampshire Department of State and the charitable trust unit. And the mission of the foundation is to enrich the educational experience in the Amherst School District through raising managing funds to enhance the educational facilities for its students. Um, on the piece paper that I handed out to you all, you'll be able to find different ways to learn more. The website is on there. It's thefoundationforamhersted.org. And you can always email questions at fundamhersted@gmail.com. Um, the foundation looks forward to working together as a town to dedicate um some much needed time and hopefully money to improving the facilities at our Wilkins.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Did we have enough that got around or do you need any others?
Yep. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any comments in public chat?
Yeah.
More additional comments? All right, we'll revisit the end of the meeting. Community council update.
So there's a lot going on with the council right now. Um, the grade rep elections are coming up in two weeks. They were previously the week before break, but they got moved due to some field trips that were conflicting with them. Um moderator elections are next Monday, so this will be our last meeting with current moderator, Emma Linton. She's senior this year, so just like to thank her for all her hard work. Um, an update on save work of the month um is in full swing. Um, there should be some ones announced next week. Or in March, April, which is very exciting. Uh, we held forums last week on Thursday and Friday. Um, at these forums, we shared the work the council has been doing to improve forums. By looking in depth into feedback and ask for any more feedback from the students based off of the data we collected. Um, the freshmen, they said their forum went okay, they got feedback on forum students. That was helpful. Um, the juniors said they had the best forum they've had all year, which is great. Um, they said they had little, no disrespect and lots of students share their thoughts on how to improve forum. Um, the seniors said that their forum went well, they got good feedback through. Um, those ones like a little unspecific, but they said it was good to get the great talking. On the sophomore forum, I'm a sophomore myself, so I just wanted to kind of touch upon how our forum went. Um, I thought it didn't go super well. It wasn't its best. Um, I was the moderator at our forum, so my job was to like ask questions to the grade and gauge them in discussion to make sure everyone was being respectful. Um, it's kind of been a struggle for myself and fellow grade reps um to get people engaged in forums. I think this forum is kind of the last straw for my group. I like the beginning of the discussion. We had a student come up who's very respectful, um said their points, I don't like the people just. Um, we did have a teacher come over and comment after that on what I perceive to be a sort of disrespectful way that the grade reps should be responding to the student points instead of just like sitting there and saying nothing. Um, though I'm sure this comment was very well intended, um it felt pointed towards the grade reps. Um, we have been trained on council to not respond to the points, um so it kind of made us feel a little uncomfortable. But the rest of the forum was okay. Um, we did have some helpful and insightful comments. Um, though there were some charged comments from students. Overall, a lot of super positive experience for our grade. Um, but I wanted to share this because I feel it's important to like acknowledge that they aren't going very well and that there is work that needs to be done to improve them. Um, after this, the kind of responses, the sophomore grade reps um are working on a proposal to improve forums and we've been getting feedback from other grade reps on how we can just make it more positive experience for everyone. So we're hoping to bring that proposal to executive next week. Um, lastly, Jasne is in two weeks on Friday, April eighteenth. Um, it's the last Jasne of the year and it's gonna be performances from Milford High School and Middle School and Amherst Middle School as well as South Heagan. Uh, should have to be a very nice program, so I invite you all to come and watch.
Awesome. Thank you. If anyone have any.
Can I say something? I need to say yes. Maya was stellar at facilitating forums. You all know because it's your job to get up and speak in front of people and constituents who are sometimes unhappy with you for reasons in your control, reasons outside of your control. And as a sophomore in high school, Maya and her fellow grade reps are navigating that challenge really, really well. So when we talk about community council being one of the best classrooms we have, it is navigating those difficult moments with a whole lot of ways and respect and grit, really tenacity, right? Um, and like commitment to getting it right. And so I just, I would like a lot of kudos to you and your grade reps because I know that it's not where you want it to be, but it's not for your luck of effort or skill or commitment.
And then you know, community council is doing a big reflection on forums for three weeks being led by Jenny Deenick and a couple other teachers that have some experience so they can reflect on their strengths, the weaknesses, what we need to do and work on. So I don't know, that's part of what's going to.
Yes.
Being put into your proposal thoughts. Yeah, that was, that was very thoughtful. I have to say the kids were engaged in that conversation. So I think that there's definitely some struggles because forum during COVID were lost. And they're trying to bring them back and and you know, engaging students in the forum way, allowing them to come up and make comment is a new experience for them. And it's a challenge. And I do give you guys a lot of kudos for working as hard as you are to do that. So I do appreciate it.
Better.
Yes.
I have a question. If it's appropriate to answer, if it's not, that's fine. Um, but you had said that some of the comments were charged.
Yeah.
Example.
Just kind of had students saying that they didn't see the meeting before um and just that they kind of wanted to abolish it completely, just things along those lines. There's lots of clapping.
And 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 the weeks before that, they were bringing forward community council proposals and trying to get feedback and try and gain that stuff. And so there's obviously some disconnect of what students understand forums are for. And what they think it should be for, what you guys are trying to use them for. There's a lot of learning and building experience going on right now.
Yeah. Good luck.
Anything else for mine? Right, thank you very much. Mr. Peter.
Sorry, um, I want to say awesome job of the school play. Right? So as not only a community student leader, um doing uh put yourself up on stage, you did absolutely phenomenal job there and I'm sure your principal completely agrees. Um, you brought the house down, which is really, really good. And um I I do want to comment about, you know, sometimes um peers don't necessarily see the end of the roadway because they're looking at the immediate roadway. Um, but you're continuing to do and continue the path that you're on now and allow your peers to actually see that in a more robust way. And so keep up the good work and like your principal said. It's noticed, right? And so your peers may not say that, um but there are people in that room that do appreciate what you did and I'm confident that uh that share next time you do a forum is gonna be better.
Right. Thank you very much. And in the community council uh concept, we are going to announce that we have the positions for the community members come up. We're doing those again in the spring so they can start at the same time when the students do and the the process works, seems to be working smoother. We know there's two Mount Vernon reps we need right now. Um, and there's at least two Amherst reps and I have to double check whether the third one was official or the next year. So I'll get to you on that, but for everyone to know, if you are out there and you're interested in participating in community council, um, we'll get an uh announcement out on the S A U site, but you can send in a letter of noting your interest and you'll get the information out as soon as possible. And the one you probably may. All right. Thank you very much. Board organization, I'm gonna, we're gonna need to go back and review a couple of things there because there are some some items, but we were, we we need to select the policy committee. There's two positions that I believe John is the only one who signed up for policy. Now that people have had time to kind of reflect and think, is there anyone else interested in doing policy?
I'd like to encourage, I'd like to encourage Raj to join the policy. He's um Raj, you you asked me some questions about process and I appreciate your attention to detail. I think you'd be a a real asset to that um endeavor.
So, uh, John, well, I appreciate the endorsement. I I I feel like I signed up for a few committees last last week and I don't want to spread myself too thin on this uh this first year here, so politely decline.
All right. I'll put my name in there and I'll work out timing with John. Um, I just I need to know the days and.
So once uh each district is struggling to fill the policy committee because of, you know, it's daytime. Um, and we are working on um seeing who wants to participate and then we're gonna schedule around their schedules. And um so we do have some requests depending, individual question depending on the person. Um, and so we'll continue to work on that and uh go from there. So I appreciate John and and Stephanie for signing up for that. It's not the easiest lift and but it's important. So we'll continue to work it out.
Um, P T S A liaison, I was talking to Victoria Parisi who is here. She's the P T S A president and is just checking in with them. They don't have necessarily regular meetings, so it's more just a hey, there anything we need to know about? We can talk about, make sure that there's a communication going on. So I don't know if anyone has any interest in working with Victoria. And kind of been working on that. We'll work it out. I'll work with Victoria.
Ten. All right, I'll take P T S A.
So there's also the recreation department liaison, that's. Which one? This is Amherst Recreation.
Christina, but you didn't. For which can I say?
Yes.
Nope, I got you under.
That's not a heavy lift. Rec department.
I I I would do, I'd be okay doing Amherst rec if uh.
All right.
We need somebody.
I appreciate that. The other thing in there we did do was the deputy treasurer, which is Peg Bennett. And I'm pretty sure she's gonna do it again.
Yep.
Yes. I thought I I ran to her literally on the sidewalk one day. She's like, yeah, I'll be back. So um, we need an approval for Peg Bennett to be the deputy treasurer for something in the proper administration. I have a motion.
Motion to approve Peg Bennett as deputy treasurer for the South Hegan water school board.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And a quick roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Okay, yes.
Peter Jess.
Man, yes.
Run, yes.
Okay, yes, thanks.
And thank you so much, Peg. We really, really appreciate your work on that.
Hey, before we move on from board organization is, I didn't see it on the agenda, but um the the matter of the um building and grounds committee slash task force is, we'll be getting an update tonight about that or is that still in the works?
Facility report.
In facilities?
Yeah, when we get to the reports.
So down in reports.
Oh, it's under reports, okay. Sorry.
Um, so next up is our science presentation. Forward, it makes you introduce yourself for everyone.
I am Erica Fossett McCarthy. I am the science domain leader and there was a lot of new faces um since the last time I've been here and we have um a lot of updates and a lot of work that has happened in the the three years that almost three years that I've been here. Um, you can go to the next one. I will let you know, sir. Um, I would like to, I can see that some of my colleagues are um looking at the presentation, so I would like to thank them for all of their work. Um, and if one of them is iPad guest and if they're listening in, uh, they all um really helped me create where the department is, but also um this presentation to share with you guys tonight. Um, so we started um over a summer and we engaged in what is called a futures protocol, but what we wanted the department and what we wanted our students to look like when they left um South Heagan. So we came up with a mission and a vision about having our students be scientifically literate and doing ingrained base work, you know, tied around phenomena and um we really thought about what that would look like and we worked on the ideas and came up with a five year plan, um which is on the next slide. Um, which involves all different things. So um we had ten points from the mission and vision that we thought really we wanted to emphasize and put our work into. So the SAS science performance, there we noticed a significant achievement gap between our typical peers and our students with learning disabilities. Um, we wanted to be able to vertically articulate, most importantly with AMS across the parking lot. We wanted to be able to elevate teaching and learning and design more student um centered, three dimensional lessons and increase student feedback and agency, industry involvement, honest challenge, um graduation pathways and facilities. Those were the top ten things that we thought really could move the needle on the education for our students. So this year um we really, we did a comprehensive exam of the SAS data from here and the middle school, both the fifth grade and the eighth grade band to identify um areas that we could put some um extra effort into places where the kids were struggling. They were struggling in physical science. Um, it had the lowest amount of kids that were at or above proficiency, which was especially concerning to us because that's the class that kids are typically in when they are taking this. So that gave us a little bit more pause. Um, we also noticed there was a twenty three percent difference between um the average performance and the performance of our students with disabilities. So we wanted to be able to address that. And then we had opt outs increasing, increasing every year to the point last year, we had forty students opt out of taking the test, which then sets us up to not really have very reliable data when we have um a pretty significant portion of the grade on taking them. So we wanted our data to be accurate. We wanted to be able to target instruction and um support the students as they needed. So we wanted that data to be as accurate as possible. Um, and then from that, from getting better data, we'd be able to identify short term and long term um areas for growth and things that needed our attention. I have to change.
Am I in the wrong spot?
No, I was in the wrong spot. So um our first endeavor was to make sure that our data is as accurate as possible. Um, so we met with the students and Maya was just talking about forums. Um, I went to forums with our juniors and I said, you know, what, how can we partner with you, right? We, we talked in the department about how um what we could do as teachers, but we realized the voice that we were missing was the student voice. So I went to forums and I talked to the juniors. I said, you know, what can we do? How can we partner with you? We want your best effort. We want the most participation possible. And um, you know, it was at. And, um, you know, it was at that point that one of the students was like, well, what's in it for us, right? They, they just don't see the value. So we were able to partner with them, um, and really get them engaged in the process this year. Um, it was to yesterday, today, so it's still like, it's brand new, but, um,
The city clerk kids took the test yesterday.
Yes, yes, not the forums.
Yes.
The kids took the, they took the test. Um, so as teachers, we knew we could practice, do the practice modules, um, and fit them in appropriately where, um, they were, would fall in the curriculum. And then we also did some extra ones as reviews for juniors. So they did some physical science, some life science, some earth science, just to make sure. And, um, this helped them build their confidence with the platform and their stamina while taking the test. Um, we increased our, um, participation and I kept knocking on wood for the last few days, but we only had two opt-outs this year instead of 40. So we had excellent attendance. Um, and then, um, also from that data, we have been targeting, um, that our, our achievement gap with our students with disabilities. So collaborating with learning specialists around the curriculum and also about student concerns. We developed a C O P, which is a community of practice. Um, and we spent time reading about new, uh, new practices and best practices and reaching, researching, uh, how we can best meet the needs of those students. And right now on the bottom bullet, one of our earth science teachers is piloting a tier-two support program for some of our students that are the most at risk. And we will analyze that data when he's done this month of intervention with them. So we figured that our next steps were to incentivize the growth for the kids um, and make sure that they could see the value of what we were doing with the test and, um, to get us really great data so that we could use it effectively. And then we also could have earlier interventions and use that, you know, P L C model as a feedback loop to just constantly be reflecting on our practices. So the next slide is what happened today and yesterday. Um, so our, we had an increase this year. Last year we had 45% of the kids that were proficient. This year we had 60% of the kids that were proficient. Um, we had 38% of the kids in level one, which is the lowest level. This year it was only 18% of the kids. And this is the difference between, in 2024, we had 103 kids take it, 43 opt-out. And this year already we had 148 kids take it, only two have opted out. And we have makeups, um, in the next two weeks, but this is already showing, um, we could see the kids put their heart and soul into this and, and really put their effort into it. So we are all like super proud of them. They are proud of themselves. Um, it was really, it was great to see. They, they were asking, can we do a practice test? So, um, they, they wanted to do practice tests in science, but even my advisory, because I'm a junior advisor, can we do a practice test? So, um, they did a really great job and, um, because this data just came in, we don't have the disaggregated data and we haven't been able to do a full analysis yet. But I am very encouraged with like the, these numbers being very useful for us to be able to target our instruction. Um, and then, uh, part of my role, um, is to help elevate teaching and learning and, and pairing with the teachers, um, to help them grow. Um, so supervision and evaluation practices, uh, in the last three years, um, I have done over 150 personal, um, formal, in informal, um, observations of teachers. Every one of those comes with a conversation after and each one is really tailored to where they are, what they want to be working on. We sit down at the beginning of their cycle and design goals that are focused around student achievement so that they can figure out what's going to move the needle forward in their classroom. Um, we started doing instructional rounds because we all know that, you know, one of the best ways to learn is to watch your colleagues do what they do and see what resonates with you, see, um, what does not resonate with you. Um, so we took a protocol from Elizabeth and, uh, refined it a little bit so that it, it felt, uh, right for our department. And we, um, go around in groups of three, uh, to check out the other classrooms and see what's going on and then have a debrief after that. Uh, we've also gone to, um, I turned a teacher to another school and we visited other departments. And we're just trying to keep that going as we move forward. And then we have, um, spent a lot more time in P L Cs. So, uh, with our course-like teachers, the chemistry teachers meet together, the life science teachers meet together. I, uh, teach advanced bio with Julianne and we need to make sure that we are planning consistently and making sure that all of our curriculum material is, uh, state and, uh, 3D. 3D is tied to the N G S S standards for anybody who isn't familiar. So that it has all three dimensions of the N G S S standards. One of the things Steve witnessed this in, um, Jenny Denix's classroom, the kids were creating their own, uh, success criteria from the national standards that we have as a state. And more and more of us have started using that as a model. So the kids have, they decide what we're doing, they decide the order that we're doing them in. And when I put the things up, they, they know what's coming next because they have decided what's coming next. So they have, there is never, you know, like, why are we doing this? They are, they have buy-in and they are, um, they have ownership over their, their learning. And then we've been increasing the amount of time that students have to reflect on their process and on how that impacts their practice, uh, their, their performance. Um, and then for rubrics, we have been doing some, uh, peer feedback among colleagues, about what the rubrics look like and how we can improve them to make them more student-friendly. And we've been doing peer reviews of student work, both, um, informed what the product would look like and what the, um, assignments might need, maybe things that we've missed. And having the whole department have their eyes on something is really helpful and, and has been able to move a lot of people's practice forward. And, uh, over the summer, we were working on developing more science and engineering practice, uh, rubrics. And those are tools that the kids can use to be able to know what we are expecting. So the impact of all of that is to increase the student engagement through authentic phenomenon-driven tasks and then create feedback loops for us and the students so that it empowers their agency, their ownership and gives us time to reflect on what's happening. Um, the other big piece about elevating the teaching and learning was vertical articulation. So, uh, the S A U had a P D day in the summer, uh, at the end of the summer. And we were able to forge some relationships and be able to design a path forward. What we wanted to do, what meetings we were going to hold together, choose areas of focus. And then really at that meeting, we had time to focus on the eight to nine transition. And the teachers were so thankful for that time to be able to, to align those two grades. They came over here, um, for one of our early release days and we met in sub-disciplines. So earth science, life science and physical science. And we wanted to ensure that we were, our contact was aligned, both inter- and interdisciplinary. And that meeting was very enlightening. We were able to identify content and lab overlap. So that, um, you know, we, we found that the same lab was done more than once. So we want to be able to not do that, make sure the children are having unique experiences and then uncover blind spots. There was, um, some things that we uncovered, you know, we're taught in sixth grade and then really weren't addressed again appropriately. So we're working to close up those gaps and make sure that we don't have that overlap. And then the next meeting that we have scheduled together is to analyze the five through 12 data, uh, for the last five years and to be able to then take that data analysis to the next level. And we've been working really, really hard to make sure that all of our lessons, um, these are, the pictures are a little bit difficult to see, but, um, the top one is called an H R diagram, which usually you would just get on a worksheet and you would figure out the life cycle of the stars. And the earth science teachers took both earth science teams, uh, nine A and nine B. They assigned each kid was a star. They had to go pick out what color star they were based on the information they had on their card. And they had the X and Y axis out there on the field and they had to create this H R diagram of a star's life cycle. And so then they, when they went in to analyze this, they were looking at themselves in this picture and why they had placed themselves where they were on the grid. So, um, that is, that's the colorful one on the top. The ones in the middle are, are the steam 3D class. They reset new 3D printers this year that work. And they had to design a paddle boat. They were given a battery and a motor and that was it. They had to design and print all of the other parts. So that is, uh, one of, one of the outstanding ones. The physics one down here doesn't look, um, like so amazing, but the kids were given a bocce ball and they had to use data analysis to figure out whether the inside was solid or, um, hollow and then what they thought maybe the composition of that was based on the data that it produced. So it looks like the ball rolling down a slide, which it is, but the kids in A C physics really took it to another level. And, um, so really trying to integrate things that the students find exciting and that they really want to understand. Lola the lobster is there in the middle with her one regular claw and her one mutated claw. And you guys are learning about that right now as the anchoring phenomenon for, uh, evolution. So we're just trying to, you know, every time we are in front of the kids, come up with something better and something engaging for them so that they want to be sound. Another area of improvement that we wanted to focus on was community and industry involvement. We know that it's important that kids like science and want to be scientists, but we wanted to be able to expose them to scientists. So global citizenship and, um, Anata, uh, A P environmental work with New Hampshire Fishing Game, Milford wastewater treatment, the Amherst Conservation Committee, physical science classes. Uh, they have an engineering panel where they bring in all different kinds of engineers. They had a guest speaker in physics from a Nobel Prize winner, uh, Tony Leggett about super fluids. I didn't even, I have no idea what you're talking about. Um, the, um, forensics class brings in two of the forensic scientists that were a part of the Bear Brook case and they work closely with them and that culminates in a field trip out to Bear Brook. Um, after the students have learned all about the case. Uh, we have two, two students, well, two groups of students that were involved in identifying new species that weren't in the habitats that they were in before in the marine science class. So they are located down here. Um, the picture with the microscope, they, uh, discovered European rock pool shrimp off of the coast of Odion and that had never been cataloged there. So now it has been officially cataloged there. And then the other one is at the same place, they, a different set of kids worked with, um, a professor at, uh, State Anselms College. And that was the first time that a sea lemon neuter brain had been reported at Odion and they were able to add that to Dr. Penny's research. Um, and then we also, the bottom bullet talks about, um, the opportunities that the, the kids had abroad. So we had students go to Bermuda and they worked at the Bermuda Institute of Ocean Science. We also had students go to the Velapopos and do two different citizen science projects with, um, one with microplastics and one with removing invasive snails. So again, we are looking for, to engage them with real-world science and to show them what the possibilities are and so that they can build networks for their future. Uh, they travel down to Connecticut with this little shrimp in the bag to work. And, and so now that student has this connection, um, with what will be her profession. And then this is a summary. There's a lot of information on, on this slide. Uh, we have this year 899 enrollments in science classes, over 16 different courses, which is an increase of 35% from when I was here in 2002. We had only 660. Um, and then you can see the breakdown of the amount of kids that are taking multiple sciences. So we have 185 students in the two courses, 35 and three. We have five students in advanced E L Os. So I'm working with four boys, um, with an organic chemistry E L O. And then we have another advanced physics E L O beyond the physics that we teach here. Uh, this year we will have 30 STEM scholars. So that is the New Hampshire scholar, but they also have done extra science and math to get that STEM designation and five additional scheme. So that's STEM and the arts. So we've got those 35 students that have gone above and beyond in, um, their science education. And then the bottom three are talking about some things that you guys have already heard about. The state requirements, uh, for science are one physical, one life. Uh, N G S S has three big domains, earth science, life science and physical science. So really we wanted to align our practice, what happens day to day with our philosophies and make sure that those match. So every student is taking earth science and life science. And then for their third year, typically they take a physical science. Uh, the majority take chemistry, but then many follow up after that and take physics. Um, some double up and get there quicker. And then facilities, um, so we are working together with the S A U for renovations of the science labs. I think we talked about this, well, you guys talked about this earlier, right? We think most of the stuff is original and it's just getting to the point where, um, we have some things that are in need of repair and some inappropriately sized classrooms. So we need to be able to, um, make everything safe and appropriate for the students. So our path forward this year, we really looked at the achievement gap, uh, the SAS performance. We started work on rubrics and more 3D lessons for 25, 26. We really want to, um, move forward with our instructional rounds, do more vertical articulation work with A M S and continue the work that we started. Everybody, um, has really enjoyed the collaborative work that we've all done together as a department. And then 20, uh, 26, 27, we really would love like to be moving ahead with some facilities projects. At that point, we think would be able to involve, um, Clark Wilkins and M V V S and maybe some K through 12 articulation work and then expand our instruction around. Uh, A M S did invite us, the science teachers did invite us to head over there and see their, um, classroom. So we think that would be an exciting opportunity. That is all I have prepared.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, let me open up for questions. Anyone have questions, comments for Mr. Manning?
Slide six. I'm sorry, your name again is.
Erica.
Erica, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
Slide six, uh, just help me, I just, I didn't catch everything you said here. Slide six, uh, just help me, I just, I didn't catch everything you said here. So is this, is each individual year the same grade? Or are we, it is, which grade is it?
Eleven.
Eleven, so it's eleven, so it's junior year. Okay, so you're following the juniors over five years.
No, this is each junior year.
Each junior.
For five years.
It's the, the state science, so it's always junior.
But we don't, okay, we don't administer, okay.
No.
This year's juniors performed better than this year's seniors.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any, uh, you, would you find it important to look at? That progress over time?
We did.
Same cohort, yeah.
Yep, we did. Um, so we found trends, right? That, that's where we found like the students with learning disabilities were low both in eighth grade. And here we found that the, the performance of males and females flip flopped, right? That they, the males tended to do better in eighth grade and then the females tended to do better in eleventh grade. So we have followed cohorts um from five to eight and then from eight to eleven.
That's how you follow the cohorts from.
Yeah.
Based on the state assessment.
Yeah, so it would be eight to eleven data that we looked at. Um, and then also when we do that work with the middle school, we're going to look at five to eight and then eight to eleven. We don't have five to eight to eleven for all of the kids, because we haven't been giving this particular test for that long. But we can do five to eight and eight to eleven.
Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Soder?
On, on this, Mitch, opt out. What are the rules for opting out for?
So there is a refusal to test form that is posted online. And you have to, a parent needs to fill it out and sign it and then uh Dana needs to sign it. And so.
We. So you, you, you were saying. In twenty twenty-four, it was. Or a term.
So we think part of the um administration of the test caused kids some additional anxiety. So where we had it in the year was after the A P tests. So we had some kids that were feeling really burnt out and that it was too close to the end of the year. And we also had it first thing in the morning, so some kids made some decisions to sleep in a little later. So we changed the way that we administered the test this year in addition to incentivizing um their performance. And we were able to drop that from forty to two. Parents can opt their students out of. The state accountability tests, they do that on a yearly basis. So if you don't want your student to take the SASS or the S A T. Um, or some of the K through twelve, they fill it up for me, you fill that out every year, we keep them on file.
There's a, is the minimum requirement percentage, where we run into any issues with the state department medication if they.
Yes, if you, if you, if your participation falls below a certain threshold, you can take that.
Yeah, so this is really good news and I, and I know when my students were here, I think that SASS, it was always like a surprise. Kids were not prepared, so it sounded like you're preparing them, but they know it's coming, they're mentally prepared, you've given them some practice. And I think that sounds like it's made a huge difference.
It, it really has the, they, there have been, there were students that came to me and said, I'm going to be absent, can I take it ahead of time? Or I'm going to be absent, can I make a plan to make it up when I come back? So they are really invested and really, I think, demonstrates what they do know and what they can do. Any other questions?
I have some, when it's my turn.
Go ahead, Mr. Glover.
Um, well, just overall praise, what a presentation, wow, I mean, I mean. Throughout, one of the things I highlighted was the engagement of the students, so I'd like to continue to encourage that, I think that's. Was really pleased to hear that. Um, an ignorant question and apologies for this one, uh but slide seven, there was um two acronyms that I didn't understand what they were. P L C and S E P.
Yep, so P L C is like a professional learning committee or, or community. And that is a, a group of professionals that work together. And you look at the assignments, then you look at student work and you look at the data from the student work. And it helps inform your practice and it inform the trajectory of the class. And then S E P is the science and engineering practices. It is part of what we assess the students on.
Great, and then one final um question, um, it's really about the vertical alignment. And I saw that um towards the end, you're really going to be looking at that, I guess, next year. And then the next year after that, really a K through twelve view. And I, I appreciate the trajectory and the widening of the lens. I was wondering if, you know, early on you presented a vision and a mission. And was that developed in conjunction with um, science departments at Amherst School District and Mont Vernon School District as, as well? Um, that they're on, on board with that or, uh, yeah, I guess that's the first question.
Yeah, that was internally, so that was just for the teachers here at South Heagan.
Okay. Um, yeah, I guess, because seems to me that would be the, the tip of the spear to align vertically would be to have a common mission and a common vision. So that the good work you're doing here can be prepared, so that. Students in younger and earlier grades can be ready for this and when they come up to, into the Sohegan High School. That they're ready, prepared to perform on day one, seems really important to me. So that, that was it. Thank you very much.
Oh, to, to echo what John just said, you know, the village school would absolutely love to. Bring you, bring you in and just be on their behalf, so um encourage you, you know, let's set something up, um, up the hill. So we can do there, you know, it's smaller before I have a school. Awesome, um, the question, do you ever engage in something local? Uh, you mentioned, you know, like things, but the way the Woods Hole, Oceanic Institute down there, you're looking to party with them.
So I um, I've been to Hui a couple of times, um, Julian teaches marine science here. So I'm sure that she has as well. I don't know that we have anything formal with them right now, but that's definitely something to look at.
That's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just Erica, thank you, Elizabeth, thank you. Uh, I asked a lot of questions to one of your colleagues last. I, I, poor Kristen, I, 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 I have some questions, I would love to follow up if I could do that. Uh, so it's not, not pressing, but I'd love to just be able to, to ask some questions all the time, so I love the work that you're doing, which is one of the part about that. So we can showcase what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, we'll, we'll follow.
Yep.
We'll do that, great, thank you. So yeah, just one last thing, I mean, I know the past few years, you, you know, you and your team have gone through and did the entire curriculum. Not having that document, I remember you presenting that. Under the pages, that was fantastic work and then to see this work that aligns with the student work and associates work, so I appreciate that's nice work.
Thank you. I, what, before she leaves, I just want to go on record at saying like, this is the work of a domain leader, right? Like we, we um, we advocated for folks with Erica's skill set. And like a great compliment to a fabulous department of teachers that we have. And so um, just super, super proud of the work that she's doing.
Yeah. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. This is her third year, four, four to years.
Yes, let me tell you, you've done phenomenal work, making a huge impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so field trips, we have a few field trips on here, there's a baseball trip. An Italy trip and a Quebec trip, um, we need to approve them, but I first want to ask if there's any questions.
I have a question about the field trip.
Yeah.
It seems like, the only question I have is it seems like there's only one.
Yes.
Chaperone.
Yes.
And I, it doesn't mention anything about the number of students they'll have under there.
I, and to quite, uh, it makes me even nervous even just one, one adult, like twelve kids, if God forbid, something happens.
Yeah, and they think.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
No, sorry.
Did you hear anything I said?
Uh, I heard one adult.
Yeah, no, no, the Italy trip, the question was the Italy trip, it looks like a great trip.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm familiar with E F educational tours from the past, um, the only question I had was it looks like there is a single chaperone. They do have experienced chaperoning trips before, but their, their previous experience has like multiple of chaperones. And like, I don't know how many, it doesn't really say here how many students they're going to be responsible for.
Yeah.
Which I don't know, may be unpredictable at this point, but.
It is a little bit unpredictable, this is, this is a kind of a newer thing that we, we were approached by Milford High School to partner with them on this trip. So, so Steph Fritz would be the main uh chaperone from South Heagan High School. And then there's also an art teacher from Milford High School that is also going on the trip. Um, the ratio is twelve to one, so we end up having more Sohegan students sign up than we would look to bring on another chaperone.
Yeah, so there is another adult going, it's not just Stephanie.
Yes.
Perfect, yeah, that's going to be my question.
Where does the twelve to one ratio come from? Is that a, is that R S standard?
It's really industry, it's a travel standard.
Good, thank you.
Questions? If not, um, the, the motion, right, uh, motion to approve the baseball trip in April. The Italy trip in July twenty twenty-six and the Quebec trip in February twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Glover, do you have a second?
Second.
Very much, um, any other discussion?
Really quickly.
Just one.
April May break, but it doesn't specify the year on that one.
Baseball this year.
You just want it to say twenty.
I wanted to say twenty twenty-five, sorry, in the notes for the record, uh, that's all I'm asking, please. And thank you.
Mr. Glover, do you have a question?
Uh, just a comment, um, which is to say, I've, I've, I've been in. I've been pleased to see these field trips come in and I, I still am and I was pleased and some of these are like the one for Quebec is um, a lot less expensive. Than some of the other ones and I'm, I can't wait to see more of this, um, these opportunities emerge as time goes on.
Thank you very much, all right, let's do a quick roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Fifty, yes.
Peter, yes.
Man, yes.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going on to the consent agenda, there are draft minutes for March twenty twenty. Uh, are there thirty, I think that these be full of minutes or changes. Now, the policies, these are second read for us here.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought, so the secondary policies or any comments or questions on the policies? There's a budget transfer request. It's um for special ed, it's, it's transferring money from special ed to the out of district residential cost, not tuition. It's from special transportation, try to special transportation, yes.
Yeah.
He said it's, it's out of district transfer.
It's, it's special ed transportation going to special ed out of district residential costs.
Yes.
So. You know, sometimes when students move and change, move money. Okay, um, and there is a donation in here, a golf cart was donated, so nineteen ninety-nine. Valued at twelve hundred dollars, I'm, you know, I'm not sure who donated, but thank you. Um, maybe if it's from nineteen ninety-nine, do we want that? Is there a liability for having a vehicle that's out of?
I mean, I mean that sincerely.
Uh, no.
So the purpose of this is to uh drag the infield of the baseball. It's, it has a limited purpose, I think it's right where it needs to be.
Okay.
It's the right amount of money to spend on it.
And it came in, uh, this donation um came in uh late last week. We've got on the agenda and wanted to get this in front of you guys prior at this meeting, because if we didn't get it approved. Baseball season runs through, right, so. But yeah, it's been inspected, you know, we looked at our liability on it, look at the maintenance costs, we, we, we do want to accept it.
Just making sure I asked.
Yeah, absolutely. There are no questions, you need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Manning and a roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Fifty, yes.
Peter, yes.
Many, yes.
Right, yes.
P V S.
Right, thank you very much. Um, onto reports received, there is a facility report. And I just want, once again, thank Roger and his team and everyone here at Sohegan High School for maintaining our facilities and keeping them. In good working order, so we appreciate that hard work. Are there any questions on that? There is a board note also in there about the um. Two community council members will serve as liaisons in the science lab task force, so if there's any questions about that. I'm sure Mr. Chen really could ask, answer those questions.
Absolutely.
Is there anything on the facilities report or that?
I, I have a couple of, I have a couple of questions on that one. First is, have two, so the first is about the task force and their meetings. Will those meetings be posted and so that. Uh, board members or other members of the public could uh attend and hear and learn what um. What, what the, what the architecture thinking and, and be a part of that process at least as an observer.
So the, what we, we just want to make sure that the, the teachers and the, and the task force. Has the ability to speak frankly, uh, you know, um, and sometimes we're worried about, it's certainly not, it's not a non-public. It's not a ninety-one A task, right, it's appointed by the superintendent and principal. Um, we just want to make sure, John, that the, the science folks and the architect can speak frankly and freely about what they think is best. Sometimes unintended is with, with board oversight or even too much administrative oversight, it can impinge that open and frank conversation. But they're not, these aren't private meetings, we, uh, I think we have one scheduled coming up. Um, May twenty-first, um, they did send a three D photographer, Harriman sent a three D photographer around to take three D pictures. We had an introductory meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, but it is May twenty, oh, sorry, Dana, one more time, May twenty-first. May twenty-first, early, is that early, no, that's after school, is after school on May twenty-first? Just to see what the three D pictures and what the initial renderings are from that work. Um, but certainly whatever the board would like, we just, our, our only dog in the fight is make sure that they can have free and open discussion.
And, and Mr. Glover, you're on the committee, right, to, that they report to about the science labs?
Uh, I don't think so, which was going to be my next question. We, we, we assigned two board members last meeting.
I can remember, you were, you were on it last year, I think.
Yeah.
Helping out, yeah, but it's Raj and.
Raj and James, yeah.
Yes, um, so they, they'll be directly involved with them, um, hope that works.
Yep, I'm delighted to share.
Yeah, we'll have updates as you need.
Yeah, and I think what, one of the things Raj said last meeting about this was, you know, that this work produced multiple options. To be considered as opposed to a, a, you know, a highest and best option in the view of the task force. So that.
Right.
So that the discussion can really revolve around choices and different pathways to achieve this objective. Um, so, so I guess so long as, as we, we have that in mind and the task force. Understands that that's their mission, um, it makes me a lot more comfortable.
So there's lots of heads nodding here and I know that was also just us, we were even interviewing the architects. And it's in the contract, it's in the contract that there's, I believe there's three different versions and we talked about. You know, if we only left them in the annex, what would that look like is one option? What if you brought everything into the main building? That would be a second option and then the third option is what they feel is.
Yeah.
Even something else that we haven't thought of, so yeah, there's a minute, there's, there's three different options.
Uh, and is it fair to say that that's at least three? And that if there were four or five reasonable options that they would also emerge?
The contract goes up to three, right?
We're funded, the contract funded for up to three.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that there should be more than three, I don't know, it's just so nascent that I wouldn't want us to.
Having to pay more though.
I see, I see. So if, so the scenario might be early on, there may be a dozen ideas that are po- po- sort of ponied about, but then though at some point they'll be whittled down to three to actually put real energy into from an architect's point of view, potentially, yeah. I mean, it could be a brainstorm that, that re- that produces lots of ideas. And then through discussion that would funnel up through the, to the task or sorry, to the committee that would then end up at our board table, we could be part of that whittling down and, and directing the, the process to go forward with ideal A, B, and C. And we're dismissing the rest of them for some reasons, like that type of dynamic is envisioned through this process.
Well, I think the vision is those closest to implementation with visitations to other recently designed best practice facilities. Work with the architect administration to throw out very like, uh, they, for example, the initial conversations, do you want doors? Do you want class? Do you want make, do you want shelving above sinks? Do you want a pre- a demonstration tables in the front of the class? Do you want removable present? They're gonna take all the feedback from the practitioners and over a period of time work and revise, but have three final options presented to the building and grounds by the architects. And then the building and grounds group could bring one, two, three, all the way to the board, whatever the building grounds wanted to. But there's I, we met originally as an introduction. I think there were hundreds of ideas thrown around about best practice. A flexible seating and enough space for the program. You know, one thing that came through and Mike and I talked a lot about this about facilities in SAU thirty-nine is what we're, what we know is enrollment doesn't drive facility, program drives facility, facility. That came through with honestly Jenny Deneck was about his experience as a science teacher. She'd want to talk about the program, make the facility support the program. Um, so I think we're in really good shape. I think the engagement, I think Harriman and the initial introductory uh moment was, was very open and facilitated. I thought Dana, Roger and the science staff was extraordinarily open and thoughtful. As they've experienced, let's be honest, that the annex substandard facilities and trying to implement a above standard program. And we're trying to align our expectations of program with our expectations of facility. That's pretty good. Danny, like that?
I love it.
Seasoned profession.
Mike's treating it right now.
That makes sense, John.
Uh, yeah, it does. And I, I, yeah, it does. And the other question I wanted to pose to the board members is, you know, unlike the other two boards, I mean, we, we could have three of us on a committee without following our, our quorum rules and our, you know, having secret meetings and such. So this is a pretty important um endeavor here. I'm wondering if a third board, a third board member from our group should join Raj and James uh for additional support, for additional uh discussion amongst them uh for additional brainstorming and um to help us all uh out. Is there any opposition to having a third?
Yeah, yeah. James and I are on the committee, but there's a sub task force.
Which is the one that he said of the science.
Which is currently, James and I are not specifically. They will report to us.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see us working, you know, obviously James and I it could be a, a buffer, but I don't think we're gonna be a filter to the board.
Now, you're, you're gonna bring this information to the board.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's what I'm saying. So it's like, it's gonna all come all the way up. I mean, I, I, you know, if there's if, if folks would like a touch point along the way, I don't see any reason why we can't do that. I I'm, yeah, I mean, I have a thought, but I'll, before I give you my thought, it's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay. Um, John, why? What are you, what are you getting after?
Um, I generally think, and I'll bring this up in our board business par- portion, that um, if more of, more of us have an opportunity to, opportunity to hear information from sources. Um, primary sources like the architects and the science teachers, then we are, but we, we stand a better chance to make the right decisions going forward. So I, I'm look, I've, I, for many years now, I've looked for opportunities to increase the number of board members who are willing to participate in committees up to three, um, to allow board members who are interested to be able to participate and to be able to be a part of the process. That's, that's where I'm coming from. Um, and I'm still a little bit concerned that there's not at least one board member on the task force. I'm not sure why that would be um not favorable. Um, uh, you know, it's for visibility, it's for transparency, it's, it's for understanding, it's be, it's so that when the task force members come to us, they have a full grasp of what's been going on and that um it will enhance our discussion and decision making. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Okay, so my comment, I, I, I don't know, I don't know, I'm, I'm not gonna answer two or three or anything, but I, 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 I totally appreciate your comments about transparency and multiple people viewing it. My experience tells me that one of the most important goals or roles of the board in a governance perspective is accountability. So to ensure that administration is accountable, the policies, the budget, you know, instruction, things over which we have governing responsibility for. For me, part of ensuring that accountability happens is by letting them do their work. And then, once the work is done and they come to us, then we hold them accountable to whatever they put in front of us. Given the fact we haven't seen anything yet, my feeling is just, I don't know, I, I don't I, I do, I do, what, what Steve says does resonate with me from the fact that we want to be able to we want to be able to have students, community council members, community members, people in the schools in a committee meeting be able to talk without the fear of a school board member staring down the back of their shirt. And I know that having done this for a long time, I know that that is a very real thing. You know, there have been times when I've had a school board member unwittingly gone to talk to teachers or whatever, even in the grocery store or whatever. With not thinking you're doing anything and behind the scenes you're scaring the crap out of them. Because all of these people have the eyes of, you know, like a Hollywood star in our community on them with like none of the money prestige or fame, right? So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about our micromanaging committees by having too much influence. That said, and I think you and I have talked about this before, the accountability piece in here, and I'll shut up after this, I know I've gone on too long, is if they, as long as they're coming back to us with three options, that nothing is done that impacts governance, budget, policy, instruction, places where that is our role before we can bless it. And I think with regard to this subcommittee, that's gonna happen, right? So, I don't know, that's my thought. Completely appreciating where you're coming from, my concern is again, the people who work in the school building, knowing how emotionally this can impact them when school board members are, are there, whether we realize it or not, which I think is a very, very real thing.
And I'm just going to add a piece that until I have easy volunteers to have at least two in each of our committees, I'm not adding a third. And I we gotta fill all our committees first.
Well, maybe the, maybe there's a solution in respect of what you both are saying, Jim and, and Stephanie. It, and not to interfere with the process. I, I think what I want to try to avoid is we get so far down the process without being updated, without understanding what's going on. Um, you know, what's sort of being, what's on the cutting room floor? I think it's really important along the way. It's so long as, as we can be I able to interject along the way, so we don't end up in a position where we're presented with options that we don't want. Um, and, and we can understand why certain decisions are being made along the way will help get to the best decision. So maybe it's less about being in every meeting or, or something, but, but maybe this is just needs to be a recurring agenda item. We need to hear from our
Yeah.
Uh, from James and Raj every month or even in between.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe send us updated emails or something along the way.
I'm, hold on, hold on.
Okay. Can I, can I weigh in here? It's, the facilities report is as part of every agenda. And we will absolutely make sure as we go through this process, as we meet, to update when we have meetings. So we, we can, you know, give a, a re- report, you know, the, the committee and use that time to update the board on where we're at. Um, and it's something what people think, but this is an opportunity to, to address it. So in school district is as transparent as any organization I've been part of. Very, very transparent, lots of checks and balances system. It's a word that's being thrown around pretty regularly about transparent. And I think about the updates, the principal reports, the every other meeting, the, you know, the policy reports, the attachments that we get, the budget process. And I want to be real careful as we talk about lack of transparency because there's a checks and balances somewhere goes from the cutting room with the task force and the teachers and the community council, student liaisons, to the, to the building and grounds committee, to here, that's a lot of steps. Right? And, and that's a lot of work. And I want to keep in mind, everything that you guys want, the people who do the work are sitting at this table employed by the Sohegan Public School District and then volunteering and partnering with volunteers. And, and that's something, you know, we want to be very mindful of. And uh, I'm all for transparency. I'm all for checks and balances. I'm all for input. And, and uh, we will make sure that we go through the right process. Um, but I think the facility report is a, a perfect place to have any updates around facilities. And so, um, I hope we can do that.
And my, just to clarify, like the subcommittee, uh, is, is not making any decisions. The architects are making the three decisions and presenting it. So it's not like that subcommittee has done any cutting, there's nothing on their cutting room floor because they've already given input. So I think in this particular instance, so when the architect kicks out, it's all, it's gonna flow its way all the way out.
I sat at the meeting for an hour, a three hour long meeting. I couldn't stay for the whole thing. There were hundreds of ideas and suggestions and conversations about the room and usage and where it could go and what do people need? And what do kids need and what do teachers need? And they're listening.
Yeah.
Taking their notes, taking their, they're doing what architects do.
Yeah.
And then they'll come back to if they have any follow up questions with their, go back. And then that's what they're bringing to the group. And, and I think it's a good process and uh.
And then you'll be able to see that and be able to bring that to us.
Yeah.
That's the process.
Yeah, and I don't miss, wanna mischaracterize your concern, John, but what I was hearing was you didn't want anything that, from that architect's work to be cut up or uh, modified and going down a single path that by the time it comes to the building and grounds committee, it's, it's been uh, massaged to something that we have, we're almost like we're stuck on a path. And that doesn't sound like that's, that's not the case here.
They're supposed to be bringing three
Yeah.
that you're going to discuss probably with some of the people who worked with them and then also bring to us. And then we decide what is the right path.
Yeah. Yeah, is that your concern, John? Do I, did, is that, did I understand correctly?
Yeah, I think so, Raj. I, I guess it'll be a function of how well the committee uh, integrates, not integrate, uh, uh, communicates with its task force to understand along the way, um, you know, what's been talked about, why are certain, why we're leaning, they're leaning, starting to lean in certain directions versus others. Um, and not to, not really to be critical of the, of them, but just for understanding in the first instance. Um, and if there's a, if there's an assumption being made along the way, you know, that is hmm, wait, wait, hold on a second, timeout, that there's, that there's an ability to maybe take a step backwards in order to make three steps forwards before it's, it's so far down the pipe that um that, that we don't have an opportunity to uh, uh, to understand um, how, how the process of how things are going. That's kind of really where my concern is. And and by the way, just for the record, Mike, I appreciate what you said about transparency and, and the concern about lack of transparency. I didn't say lack of transparency. Transparency. I just want to be clear. I, I'm not suggesting we have a lack of transparency. I just want a process that that, that rec- that recognizes it and respects it, and then we continue to have transparent process. So that's where I'm coming from. This isn't about you know, uh, you know, a fundamental lack of trust in the people or the personnel or, or anything like that. It's just this this is all about, you know, how can we, how can the Sohegan community, how can the students, the teachers, the staff, the board and the community council all have their input respected along the process from the beginning of conception to the final decision? That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and I, I think we understand, and I think James and Raj have heard you to make sure that they will make sure your concerns are all, are addressed.
Okay, appreciate the discussion on that. Thank you.
No, thanks, John.
All right, I'm going to move on. The uh, inside report, that information, again, if you read the memo, it's in there. We would like to hold discussion off on data analysis to a board retreat in the summer so we can include all the data points and not just this one. As, as you heard tonight, there's the science, the SAS science. And uh, we got PSAT ten, the PSAT, the SAT, we got NEW, we got all sorts of things. And we should, we'll get it as an aggregate. So we actually understand how our students are performing and not just this one.
Yes, which is a reminder for some of our newer folks, EWA data is being used on an internal basis. Evaluation curriculum structure, who are we gonna go ahead and put an extra emphasis in one particular category versus another particular category? In the past, it was presented to all of our boards on a pretty regular basis. But it got confusing for the community in terms of what is this? How do you actually properly interpret it? And so it is a very confusing dataset.
Yeah.
And we have traditionally not received it at this body. Um, but because it was a public records request.
Yes.
It was a courtesy that is included in here. So we're informed because the public records request, ask for it. If that's up, the community, it's where we're up to data. So I fully support doing this.
Thank you. That's a super helpful clarification. I appreciate.
Thank you. That was a really good explanation. Um, and here's also a treasure report. Just wanted to thank CJ and Peg for all their work. And if anyone has questions on treasury reports, let me know. We can make sure we filter your questions. Um, board correspondence, uh, this is uh, where we're adding if there's uh, any emails to everybody. And there's only one that did come in late recently, I think everyone saw it, that it looks like our robotics team is doing well this year. They're going to regionals and they were just looking at how to fundraise money. And that has already been addressed through data and everything. So there's really nothing for us to do. It was just a a reach out, see if there's anything else, any more information that we can get. So thank you, Dana, for, for that work, being on top of that. Uh, there is a personnel in here. Do you want to go ahead and say something?
Yeah, I'll talk. We have two things under personnel this evening. Um, uh, first, I'd like to take a nomination or a motion to uh accept the resignation of our health instructor, Chelsea Doherty, um, with regret and uh Chelsea, who only worked here one year, but she's moving out of state. Um, and she will be missed, may impact right away. Uh, and so if we can get a motion to accept the resignation of Chelsea Doherty, uh, with regret. Appreciate that. And then uh, we're gonna have a nomination, but I want we'll do that first, then I'll speak to the, to the nomination.
All right, so.
Motion to accept the resignation of uh, Chelsea Doherty with regret, uh, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schroger, um, and roll call vote on that, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Manny, yes?
Right, yes.
Thank you very much. And yeah, we're sincerely sorry to, to lose our assistant teacher.
Yes, and then uh, uh, we're very excited to nominate a social studies teacher, Annie DeWitt, uh, in the, in the agenda. See uh, some information on her, her, her resume, uh, very excited about her. I'm gonna turn it over to David to talk a little bit about her and what she brings and how she fits into the staff and the organization. Uh, Steve and I sat down with her for forty-five minutes and had a very candid conversation. And uh, we, we are too very excited to bring Annie here. And uh, so Dan, you want to speak to it just a little bit?
Sure, yeah. Annie's coming from Memorial High School in Manchester.
Sure, yeah. Annie's coming from Memorial High School in Manchester where she has worked as a social studies teacher. Um, she's taken on some, uh, some teacher leadership opportunities there. Has a lot of experience in, uh, curriculum development, um, also is a very big part of their community. So, uh, in addition to, um, being a really good fit philosophically in terms of a student centered focus. Uh, she was most intrigued by by Sahhegan in terms of the feel of community, right? So she's not just going, I do not anticipate her just being a social studies teacher here. Um, she has a coaching background. She has been, uh. A a class advisor, advised several clubs, um. Uh, almost became a lawyer, so has a big passion for, um, kind of pre-law, mock trial. Uh, a a lot of other extracurriculars. Um, all of our, our interview process. For teachers includes a demo lesson. And so, um, seeing Annie teach was really great. Uh, it included a very veteran. Sahhegan staff member on on there and his response was, oh, she did everything that you could want a teacher to do. Um. Those also come with student feedback, which was really positive, both from the class as well as the student ambassador tours. Um, so we're just really excited about, um, what she could bring to the department.
And and for James and Raj, we we have quite an extensive process, um, on hiring and interview. Uh, and Dana and and the staff has done incredibly well. And, uh, one day we can talk to you and we're about the hiring process to inform you. Uh, there's multiple stages to it, multiple eyes on it. And, uh, we believe we deserve to have the best teachers that we can attract and that we think our process does that. Uh, and I enjoy talking to her and and here's like she she's a grinder. Uh, you know, I learned today that she was the BG swim coach who won three state championships of swimming. She's currently the Bedford Boys and Girls Swim Coach. And been there for five years and has ten championships between the two teams. So, uh, she knows how to understand. She understands kids, can relate to kids, can connect to kids in a wide variety of of of, uh, demographics. So. Crazy excited. Uh, you see in there as well as the salary, uh, um, and the the network. So it's. Uh, we're bringing her in at sixty four thousand six hundred eighty one and, uh, you can see the person that's replacing. There's a bit of the savings and we, you know. Always be aware of that when we we do this.
Great, Mr. Manning.
Did Frank retire?
Uh, yes, he resigned. He resigned this, yeah, in September. Any other questions?
I do actually, I like, like, I I love, uh, teachers to coach as well, right? Because it means like they truly are engaged in the community. Do we have, do we exactly got opportunities where she's going to be able to jump in and and be able to do that?
There's no shortage of opportunities.
No, no, because I still want her to come here and then be like.
Uh, she, she was very transparent. She will not stop coaching swimming in Bedford. She's very attached to that. Uh, but she's also a track coach indoor and outdoor. Um, she's done across country. Uh, like I said, I think there's a great opportunity to get involved. We have a new law and justice club. Uh, I think there's lots of.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like she's got all this enthusiasm. I don't want us to accidentally not have opportunities for that enthusiasm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, can I have a motion to accept the nomination?
Some enthusiasm.
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes, with enthusiasm.
All right. And then the last thing that we have here and, uh, typically, uh, this is something we ask for around, uh, May into June. Um, but given the 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 climate, um, uh, in New Hampshire and in in hiring, uh, staff. Um, what we're, you see a memorandum in your in your agenda that, uh, we'd like to go through the the process to, uh. You know, be able to offer contracts to people in between meetings. And there's a process to that. Um, and, you know, board members who've been here in the past. Understand when we get a candidate, let's say, next week, we get a candidate we want to bring on. Uh, we would go there, we'd notify you, we'd attach all the information that you've got here today. You got to be able to look at it. If there's any questions or concerns. Uh, we could talk through that and, uh, and then, but what we'd like to do is. Basically be able to offer a a candidate that goes through our hiring process in all three districts, a contract. And then, uh, the nomination will be affirmed at the next board meeting. Um, and that practice, I I don't think is 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 anything but necessary. Um, there are people who are walking into our interview process with offers in hand and they just want to come here to see what happens. And if you make them wait. Three or four weeks, you might lose out on the candidate, right? Um, another surprising thing of the climate and Dana, you've been on. More conversations with, uh, high school principals. Uh, strangely, the teaching hiring process. Moved up into February and people were going through hiring process for teachers for July one start dates. Uh, in in February, the month of February, never really seen that before because it usually goes like superintendents, like November, December. Principals, January, February, sister principals, February, and then March you start getting into, you know, some of that. The cycle has just been very quick, very competitive and and I'm not sure other places have the process that we do. Because it's a get to place and but we want to be able to do as tight on this as possible. So I'd love to get a motion to to allow us to go through this hiring season process.
I I moved to, I moved to support, uh, Mike's, uh, hiring process. And by the way, Mike, this is a good example of. How we can share information in a way that is exigent, that a way that people have input. Um, but still allows you to do the good work and and attract us, uh, you know, attract top talent to our system. So I applaud this process. And I appreciate you bringing it forward. So I'm I'm happy to, uh, put that motion forward.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other question, any other discussion or questions? And this seemed to work smoothly last summer when we needed to get some hiring done. Um, so it, yeah, it allows us to ask questions and, you know, if there's someone that comes over, it's usually a couple of days to jump in and ask questions. And, uh, we can move forward and hire the right teachers.
But, yeah. You're empowered to find the best.
Yes. All right, there's no other discussion, uh, the role call vote, Mr. Grove, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Pootie, yes.
Peter, yes.
Schroger, yes. Manning, yes.
Ron, Jeff.
Thank you all. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. So on to other business. This was the piece that, uh, Mr. Manning brought up last time about, um. If there's anything that people would like to be discussed at future board meetings. I don't want to take that now and keep that as a standing item on the agenda so we can make sure we always address it.
Yeah, we we had, we had Stephanie and I talked about this with Mike and Steve during the agenda setting process. We had done this previously when I had been board chair. We had done this previously when I was vice chair at the Amherst School Board. I thought it was effective because, um, it limits. My way, quite frankly, it limits emailing back and forth, you know, next time where we're under scrutiny. It also puts out for the public what what we're thinking in terms of what we want on future agendas from a board perspective. And, um, you know, it allows us, you know, potentially want to move forward in the future to, uh. To to make a motion to accept the actual agenda to start the meeting in the future, but that's something we can decide later. So. Um, that's really the impetus from it. So the people who are watching or listening right now can see what we're thinking in terms of what we want to be in future agendas. I will start. To give an example, it's probably something we're going to talk about anyway, which is, I think they're what are they called, three oh six or three oh?
At three oh six.
At three oh six, um, standards and changes and and, you know, that, again, I'm gonna. I'm gonna say this is something I would like to talk about, but it's not necessarily like going to be on the agenda, right? But it's just. This is something that I think is important for us to discuss at some point. So we want to codify it within the minutes just to say that. This is something that potentially we can talk about in the future. Um, and then the other thing that I think that. Would be important, again, I haven't been on the board in five years, so I don't know historically what's happened here, but. The idea that, the idea to me that we have two facilities committees, one for Sahhegan and one for Amherst to me is kind of a mind bender. Um, that we don't have a joint facilities committee, it seems like to me is. Kind of a mind bender, so.
I can give you a little history of that.
Well, I don't want to talk about it right now, but at some point, maybe we want to talk about it. That's all I'm saying. So I'll I'll leave that. Those are the two things that I think might be important to talk about in the future.
It's ready. To your point. I would like to follow up on Mr. O'Keefe's mention of some places where we should look at our board goals. And so I know we have a board goal conversation coming up to set new board goals, but I would like to include, um. Some of Mr. O'Keefe's insights and feedback from those of us who sat on the board, or for you. Over the last time before we set new goals.
Okay, I'd like to see a structure or a map of really the next twelve months from a presentation standpoint. Um, so tonight with science, they tried to actually filter through all of the different divisions and. And the partners at the school, including and not limited to academic and co-curricular. And so we can do like a club, uh, presentation, figure out how our fifteen minutes at the end of the day is actually working, is utilized. Um, you know, should we be revisiting what that looks like in addition to all the academic stuff? And, uh, a special attention towards, uh, special. Specifically understands that, uh, that piece. And it helps us as board members when, you know, folks in the community ask questions, we can refer them to maybe a month. Uh, where a topic has already been mapped out and it'll be discussed either in person or watch online.
Yep, yeah, that that's definitely ones that, uh. We've talked about getting on agendas, but following them, following through and maybe like I said, mapping it out a bit more to be able to see when. You weren't thinking presentations, okay. Anything else?
Another item that we should be including is the committee updates, because I have some updates for tonight.
Yeah, and I don't know why that fell off, to be honest with you. I think it's, we need to get them as a standard.
Yeah, I think it fell off because I didn't think we were going to get, we haven't fully organized. I didn't think people would do their work on their committees. So when we set the agenda from two weeks ago, we didn't know within two weeks.
Okay.
Talk about not having all the committee assignments.
Right, so that's, that's our bet. It will be a regular standing, you know, thing.
But, yeah, but and I think under some of this, I was going to ask, is there. Move, you know, a couple of things. One of them was that recreation and how we, where we stand and looking forward on that really. The the recreation.
The these, yeah, so, um, we, Jim and I set up a date in May. Uh, to begin the process of mapping out the 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 approach. And then we'll figure out at that meeting who and when we're going to engage. Um, because it was kind of, uh, tossed up in the air.
Yeah, there's a lot of new people on the town side too. So it's going to be a full zero discussion.
I think it's May fourteenth.
I think so.
Great. Oh, is there?
I have, I have, I have some to add when it's my turn.
All right.
Okay, um, I have, I have four. I'll just sort of say to them briefly so we don't go on and on. Um, one is the notion of the sharing of the information early and often. So that all the stakeholders are adequately in the process consistent with our constitution policy is work that. Has been sort of s- s- scratched around the surface. I don't think we've come to some resolution on that. Um, certain items here we've discussed tonight are making some progress in that organically, but, um, I'd like for us to sort of. Really kind of fine tune that, um, and figure out, you know. Everyone has a lane, but the way that our constitution and our culture is, is that we share lanes. So where do we share lanes and how do we do that effectively and efficiently? Um, with voices being heard is something I think we should continue to discuss. Um, uh, this is a, next one is more of a SAU wide thing. Maybe there'll be some discussion about this at that. Organizational meeting or a goal setting meeting, but, you know, throughout our PK K to twelve system, we have educational space. Uh, concerns elsewhere outside of Sahhegan. Um, Sahhegan has, um, understood that on at least technical basis. There's, um, educational space potentially available and how we leverage that space, especially in light of, um. A lot of threats coming down from, uh, state and federal governments to public education, seriously something we should continue to discuss. Uh, three is, um, about the field trips. Um. There are, there are, I'd like to see us, I I mentioned this before, uh, before Jim and Raj were on the board, just briefly. I'd like to see us consider, uh, supporting those, um, experiential, uh, uh, activities. Uh, by money with some sort of, uh, student grant, um, that could be built up so that. Some, either proportion or the entirety of a trip at least once during a four year high school experience could be, could be funded. Or at least partially funded, um, so that there's equity in in that. In that students can have a means, uh, some support to have those experiences at least once. And then fourth is, um, I'd like us to continue discussing, um. Uh, promoting or promoting, but, uh, enabling, uh, candidate statements, uh, in voter, our voter guides. Uh, we almost got there last year. Um, I had some discussions which I can, um. Uh, brief at another meeting with Milford, uh, personnel who are in charge of that. And I have a lot of, uh, information about the how they do it. And I'd like to see us, uh, maybe learn from them and model from them and and make our own process so that we. Our voting public has a voter guide that that encompasses everything and that's on the sample ballots that they see in the voter guide. So those are my four contributions.
Out now, thank you. Anything else? There's nothing else. Uh, Mr. O'Keefe, I just want to go back to you. You had some updates too.
Yeah, so, uh, a lot of stuff on the Melbourne side of the equation. Um, and number one, James and I are going to be on a monthly basis. Putting an item into our home running flyer from a board's perspective and we're going to share the responsibility. One month he'll type it, next month I'll type it. And then, uh, we'll call like the James and Steve corner or whatever. It's going to go out monthly to all the residents sign up. And then we have like over, I think over a thousand people that receive the newsletter. So it's, uh, it's pretty cool. It's a really good way in the lack of local newspaper to to get up. I see you guys laughing. Steve and James corner or James and Steve corner? But I think it's going to be a very effective way to 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 get sort of communication out what this body is actually doing. Um, I know, uh, Amy and I had, uh, an opportunity to talk about, um, it's not lost on me that Melbourne did not pass the Sahhegan budget. So it's multiple years in a row and, um, I've got to figure out a way how this body can embrace and engage. That community up the hill so they feel a part of what's going on here. And, uh, there's multiple levels that James and I are going to be working on. Of course, make sure you get that accomplished. Uh, but one of them, I'm super excited to say that our spring gala parade, uh, that's actually coming up. Um, and I know they reached out to Dana and and team and, uh, we'd like to invite, uh, not only the high school to participate. Uh, but, uh, our sports teams, uh, to be recognized for their accomplishments over the past year, especially with state championships. And our parade director has come up with a really creative, uh, idea to stand behind our championship flag and. March down, uh, down our main street and 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 celebrate that success. We've got a high school band that's going to be playing. Uh, madus, maybe a little biased there, but, uh. They've got some stage time, uh, as well as our high school band and and, uh, middle school band will be marching actually in the parade. So. Um, for those who don't know. Yeah, well, then we're already on it, trust me. Um, we reached out to Dana to incorporate them as well. Um, but they got their mindset on, uh, a different priority right now and that's winning. Um, but. For those who don't know, the Spring Gala event is Melbourne's biggest event. It'd be the equivalent of Amherst's Fourth of July parade. And so this from from our community standpoint, uh, is just as important as the celebrations that occur in Amherst on the Fourth of July. So it'd be awesome if we can incorporate, uh, the high school there. Um, James and I are going to be partnering, come up with a couple of ideas in terms of. Getting maybe superintendent and the principal to come up for a couple of, uh, sessions and and talking points and, um, at our community event, which. I'd like to update everybody on in a couple of minutes in terms of what James and I solicited feedback from our community members there. Um, but, uh, some ideas are to, you know, possibly incorporate maybe some teacher presentations. Up on the hill at our library once it's finally done being constructed. So I I I treat it as no ideas off the table and hopefully we can. As a body come up with some really cool, creative ways, uh, to 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 engage, uh, the folks up on the hill.
Did you say you wanted the principal to partake in the lip sync battle?
Well, that's absolutely. Get a high school team to do that. Oh, my God, that would be great. Yeah, the the elementary school is 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 pretty engaging.
As long as you're lip syncing salt.
In constant bad, um, but. Uh, but James and I actually hosted probably about twenty people for our community. Uh, but James and I actually hosted probably about twenty people for our community event, uh, last, uh, last month. And, uh, we got some pretty cool feedback, a lot of questions regarding funding. Um, so at some point, we may want to actually engage our community members about what that looks like, especially if you get more information from the state. Um, some, 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 some ideas about, you know, some of the changes from a federal level and maybe some of the state level things. So maybe we can have community, uh, sessions with that. Um, do, do you wanna add anything? I, I, there's kind of things that we talked about. One of them was, um, you know, obviously the budget and, and.
Talking about that, um, we're talking about senior projects, presentation.
Yes.
Um, up and. Up the hill, the opportunity there, everybody, especially tying in. But we did have a good showing for breakfast. Um, I did not bake any bacon, sausage that day.
Was this Kent?
But it was, it was good to hear everybody, um, appreciate superintendent Barry coming and. And, uh, being there, maybe showing for everybody, but with that, it was, it was interesting to hear the dynamic with. What the town was talking about. And then their budget, along with our budget, it was kind of everybody talking about two things, um, all at once. And so. Well, we'll do it again and we'll do it at a different time. Uh, but you know, of course, we wanted to present at that moment. So we could have the input from the town going into the operating budget, which basically didn't do well, you know. So we got some challenges there. We got some, probably the messaging, I think, we can stand point, but. Aside that, I can't think of anything else you didn't cover, Stephen. Very good job.
Yeah, he did. This here project thing is, is a very valid, but maybe we can come up with some creative ideas to offer to students, um, uh, a, a presentation up there. Um, I think that would be kind of, uh, you know, a cool touch, just something to think about for next year. The, the reading program, which we talked about with the superintendent, sort of the summer reading program. Um, and I know you guys could be working on sort of the next version or vision of what that looks like, just involving some of the, the, the local community members in that. There's a lot of feedback about, um, process and, and, and fiscal stuff, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there'll be, there'll be a lot. We have lots of connections about state and funding and, and policy of the administration right here in our own town. But a few people that, one of them sits on the committee, that's one of the reps that are in town, there's machine house. A lot. And I think that'd be good for everybody.
Just, just a small, just a small thing. Are we still doing, there, there was a time when we had, every once in a while, we'd have a Sohegan board meeting in Mount Vernon. At the village school. Do we still do that?
We do.
Yeah, we did.
We haven't done it last.
I haven't done it and now there was.
It was my first year, not the last year we could have done that and.
We did SAU meetings up there.
We did.
Um, but, uh, no.
And community council had been.
You know, you have double owls.
Well, part of the problem was, uh.
Yeah, now, now.
Two years ago, but this seems to be much more reliable.
I mean, Steve Dix has the greatest contribution he's made.
Yes. I used to get complaints all the time. We haven't had a complaint about sounding.
Double owls has changed the game so we can put that back into the game.
Yes, I, I, I do wanna add though, so I think Jim can, you know, ahead in terms of communication with, with, with this body. And I think it's something that we, when we think about our goals, like, like Christine had mentioned a couple of minutes ago. Maybe incorporating a more frequent quarterly or monthly meeting with our communities. Uh, and the Amherst folks meeting at the Amherst library, James and I figuring something out at the Melbourne library. We, we used to do that, but we have, we haven't done that in quite some time. So getting out there and if you get, nobody show up, it's an hour on a Saturday. But if you get five people showing up, that community feedback is one other mechanism for us to go ahead and, and solicit, uh, ideas from, from our.
Yeah, it's one thing I wanted to, to try and do is bring some of that back. I mean, when we tried to do it, there were. A year, year and a half, we tried to do it. We were meeting monthly and nobody showed up. This was after COVID.
Was it?
Nobody showed up, except for the, you know, board members.
To your point too, it might not be the worst if at least one of those Amherst people trot themselves up the hill. I mean, you're welcome to trot yourself down the hill as well, but I think there sometimes is a sense that we forget we have a community up that way. And, and maybe being available to just see their faces and meet them.
Yeah, I'm really glad you said that, because that's real, right? The perception that this is an Amherst high school is real. And, uh, it's something that we combat quite a bit up there when people talk about this, this institution and, and. People don't understand or recognize or feel ownership. And we've talked about that many times at this body, especially with our recognition thing, but that's something that. James and I are gonna have to work to sort of combat and, and, and try to make folks feel that they are a member of this.
Well, James in the corner could actually meet the beacon, I could be free.
Well, and I think that's what you're saying is that like when you're having remains, it's like we're usually having a couple. Amherst reps, I know, the whole board members come up, so they see us as no people that we all are, that we're one versus. You're only have Melbourne reps and we never talked to anybody up on the hill, but if we come up and we're an agent, does that make a difference?
Yeah, it comes down to constituency, right? And the, the elected representation of this body and that is. Clearly, I'm open up there and we, we need to work really hard on, on, on that component. It's, it's a real problem.
Yeah. And I, I think it would be good even the Amherst, if we start trying to do the same meetings we used to, we tried to do before. I mean, if we had a Melbourne rep too, that they say, hey, yes, we, so there's a lot of people here in Amherst that have no idea. They just think you guys made wish. It's like, no, no, you have a seat with the board. So it'd be good for them to get it as well. Anything else that's on? Okay, um, superintendent update.
Yeah, um, assessment schedule, I, it's, it's assessment month, just to give the heads up. April ninth is a, is an important day here. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to go about differently is creating the right environment for. Our assessments and, uh, a little credit to Dana and her staff, uh, on April ninth, which you're gonna see is missing that great citizenship test. Tenth grade PSAT testing, eleventh grade SAT set testing. We've, we pumped the tires on this pretty, pretty well. Through the newsletters, through Messenger's Home, out of the SAU. Um, we really want people to know that, that's an important day. And on that day, seniors have a senior project work day. Um, Dan, am I missing anything? I don't, I don't think I'm missing anything, but as schedule wise.
I guess the only thing I would add is the intentionality of choosing a half day, so that we are kind of preserving as much instructional time as possible. We're real intentional to do that on, on a, on a half day.
So, uh, we're, we're expecting that this could be, uh, uh, I think that moves forward from year to year and, uh, appreciate the work on it. And then, um, just a quick transportation update, and this is the last thing I have to say. It's a constant battle. It's, it's a, it's a dogfight. Uh, I can report out, um. Not, you know, enthusiastically that, you know, we've only arrived on time to this campus once this school year. Um, with all busts, it is, it's, it's not good, right? So with that said, you know, we're hoping based on our work with butlers and beacon or beacon, butler and now it's butlers. It's beacon, yeah. And, uh, and we're looking at two routes after April break. And so that should, that should help, you know. Adding routes. No, right, no, we're at thirteen, we're hoping to get to fifteen and then we'll reroute. And then, you know, spend the last few months seeing what that looks like. And then, uh, we have some conversations happening in the spring into the summer. About really taking a hard look at our routes and, uh, the technology that we use to do that. And, uh, we hope people can help with that. That's the update on transportation.
There's a road closure happening, uh, for one. Yeah, so there'll be some small adjustments to, um, to a room. Yeah, so it, it will attach to a small handful of families.
So Mike, transportation, are we at the point now where we should be assessing bringing that in house? I know it was a thought we talked about a couple of years back and never really pursued it. You know, a great degree of, of, of effort, but, you know, it's expensive. You gotta hire drivers, you're gonna worry about pensions, you're gonna purchase buses. But in the long run, with the contract that we've had, the instability of, of our ability to keep stuff on time. Are we at a point now where we should thoroughly visit that?
I think there's a, um, few things that we should take in consideration and, and then that is on the list to, to look at, you know, different. Kind of single tier routes for the, the whole SAU and our start times, like that kind of comes up in the conversation, um, but what? You know, uh, the conversations about, you know, Wilton, Milford and, and, and so he can do something with transportation. Um, cause, uh, Wilton and, and Milford are in year three next year of a three-year contract. We're in year five of a five-year contract, so there's gonna be some conversation about, you know, how we can do that. And, and, uh, so we, we, we have some things on the table to look at and, and that is certainly part of it. Um, I'm optimistic because we should, we should be able to manage the number of students who use. Transportation. It should be manageable. And, and so we're gonna see kind of how it goes as we work in our final year of our contract. And then we'll make some decisions on how we wanna move forward, but definitely some conversation and we'll continue to update you guys as we, as we work through it. That's all I have for tonight.
I don't know, one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Health insurance. So Health Trust, big issues up at the state house, um, insolvencies, threatens, leaving the state, stuff like that. Should we be exploring proactively any alternatives for that? Be pretty comfortable staying, but.
At this point, I'm comfortable staying. I'd like to see what, what happens, um, and, uh. That I haven't moved beyond that at this point. We're not, I think I, um, based on my work with the other superintendents around Health Trust. And hearing what they're trying to do, Health Trust is, it is looking out for. Your school districts, they are trying to do their, their work. They, they have some obstacles and challenges as well, but I get the, you know, um. I get the feeling in the, in the vibe from them that they are trying to do the best they can on behalf of Boston, but we will monitor that when things change. You know, two ninety-seven, right? And that will impact things depending on how that goes, but not optimistic that that's gonna be.
Eligibility issues, um, in terms of school care, which is the, the alternative. So there's some, uh, in the Amherstville district. And, and just to be clear to everyone, you know, who might be listening, if there's not a problem with Health Trust itself. There's a bill going through at the state house that could cause some extreme changes to cost distribution and funding. To schools and to insurance companies that could cause problems. So I just wanted to be clear, it's not a problem with Health Trust for me today. No. Yeah, we're watching, we're, we're working on it. But pleasant. Okay, one last thing before we sign off. I was just contacted, um. First week of May is Teacher Appreciation Week. In the past years, we have provided breakfast for them. One morning and they gave us the option to choose our day, because usually we're given a day. It doesn't work with a lot of people's schedules, so I would love the ability to give them breakfast. Again, usually it's just like bagels and cut up fruit and. Cream cheese and yogurt.
Someone makes really good parfaits, just saying.
First full weekend?
I think that was Dan.
First full week, so is there a warning that's, I might just send out an email, I need a more, but I do need to get back to it quickly. That's better for people than another's day, like who's home or not, but I'll send, I can send an email and just ask for a quick RSVP. So that's when I want to give a heads up on that. So I definitely wanna get back to them. That's it. We have public input to of two. There is nobody in the room.
We had one chat earlier.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, this is Mike Albida and I appreciate the board, the administration's decision to restrict remote comments at this time. I look forward to when we can have open discussion. Like again, I was disappointed by the act and I'm offering to help. Review the process in which we proceed and also offering to help in finding who's responsible. And I said apologies for the delay in sharing my con, this comment was done after the first public comment. And that's, yeah, we got them all.
That's it. Okay, thank you. And Mike, yeah, we appreciate it, uh, but it's the, um, information that's sent to the police and they're doing their investigation work. So we let them to know that, I believe. And that is, is there any non-public? I know very many. All right, we're good. And so we can adjourn the meeting. We don't need a motion of that, just during the meeting.